It is six o'clock. I'm going to fill this meeting in the Slade border. We will start with the approval of minutes for the meeting July 29.
They look good to me, and I would move that we accept them as presented.
Good second thought.
I just have one correction. It's one, one ninety-eight in there. It was like a synopsis kind of line, but it was, I went back and watched it on the video. So it's at one hour and like nineteen minutes. And I kind of summarized some of the points people brought up and then made my own points on them. So it said Ms. Stewart summarized that there had been some conversation about Bicknell-Brook. And then it says which is sampled regularly, but what I went on to say was that I talked about the samples around the lake. So, and I acknowledge that that spot had probably been sampled, but also touched it out deep water. So I'm not sure how to reword it. One ninety-eight? No, it's, I just love these things open. You need to get you like a second. No, and it was hard to summarize. I wasn't sure what the best way to, but yeah, yeah, just take this. Because I was acknowledging the number of samples and basically said I was sure that they had samples. But anyways, I think it was, and then do you want the time from the video? Yeah. It's one hour and nineteen minutes, about twenty seconds.
Well, the correction is?
Is, it's not just, it wasn't just Bicknell-Brook. That's, yeah, sorry, guys. Nope, sorry.
So your suggestion line, one ninety-eight, say about Bicknell-Brook, just add?
Basically, so it says which is sampled regularly, but I was talking about the lake being sampled regularly and there were, and mentioned like the deep water. So it's a little more.
So is it a, you mentioned a couple of the locations which you're in the reporting?
Yeah.
And then the lake and then?
So the lake is sampled regularly.
The lake is sampled, so.
Yeah.
That sounds like the important, the most important distinction.
Yeah, the lake is sampled regularly and, you know, I'm not in charge of the sampling, but I know that they sample different spots. I know, right?
Yeah, well, that sounds like the substantive, the pretty substantive.
Yeah.
Change, as you're suggesting.
Yep. Yeah, I didn't say with any specificity because I don't, I'm not involved in the sampling. I just wanted to make it clear that we're talking kind of in general.
John, you want to amend your motion to as?
Yes, I'll amend it as corrected.
Second thought.
Are there other comments or concerns? All of the favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Four ayes and one abstention. All right, we will move on to board the boards. Basically, it's a huge night.
I don't have a great deal from the Energy Committee, but I do have copy of these. Pass that down, please, John. These are the new rates which took effect at the beginning of the month, the beginning of August, rather. It shows a substantial difference between our community power as well as, and for most of us, Liberty, although there are some people in Enfield Center, of course, who have ever sourced on, fortunately. But it does show an excellent difference between the rates that we can get and the rates that are offered from Liberty, particularly a large difference for the basic rate, but also for the other rates as well, which allow you to consider whether or not you want to use other resources. Other than that, not much. If possible, if this could be attached as a link to the webpage, that would be great. Do you like me to pass you a page?
I'll leave it electronic copies.
Actually, I got this off of Community Power site. That's where it is. So I think a link to the Community Power site to that particular page, maybe.
Yeah, look at it. We might already have it.
I looked, it wasn't there, no. I just happened to pick up that other towns have done exactly that. They've linked to this rate page. That would be a nice thing. Yes? Oh, that's all I have.
Yeah, no, the Power Program is excellent.
Excellent. Saves people a lot of money.
Conservation Commission had a relatively brief meeting, went over items from old home days and specifically a little bit about what we learned about what we need to target and how in terms of including a more diverse subset of our populations. There were, it was, folks who attended had good feedback, but now we have kind of learned a little bit about how we need to engage different generations to get them to some of these neat events that they do. Got a little bit of an update from one of our members, which was interesting, on Crystal Lake and heard that they had found a resource to do the septic inspections at a group rate for under three hundred dollars. So that was pretty exciting news because I know previously folks in meetings had told us eight hundred, which I think people felt was alarming. So that was some interesting news for Conservation who remains very interested as a group in the septic ordinance. And our next meeting is the first Thursday in September.
Eva and the Heritage Commission are both meeting this week, so I will have an update at the next meeting.
You might want to move forward too, because when the blower is blowing, it's really bad back there. Just having sat back there, it's terrible. The blower is awful.
John? Yes, received an email today. The first meeting of the Budget Committee will be Tuesday, August 27th, at seven o'clock right here. You're all welcome to attend.
Absolutely. The planning board had a good meeting with a minor change to the site plan approval for the new, hopefully the new brewery on Main Street in the old Bondry Depot. And then a really good discussion, sort of digesting a lot of the information that came through the HOPE grant, the housing opportunities planning grant. So a lot of good conversation around some, just how can we take that information and move forward? Any questions for anybody for the folks? All right, we will move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you. I will quickly add to what John said. The Budget Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday night. The first CIP meeting is scheduled for Monday night. Right now it's listed at Ocelot, but we're going to be looking at moving the CIP meeting here as well. So keep an eye on the website for that, but the CIP meeting will be meeting Monday and Budget Committee will be meeting Tuesday, and we'll kick off the budget season. With that, a staff report, as reported at the last meeting, we're down one groundskeeper position. We are planning to rehire this position, but are waiting to go closer to the winter season. As of August 5th, we have hired Tasha Moreno as the new police assistant. For the past couple of weeks, she's been assisting with digitizing records in the police department and will be taking over graphic control and other duties once school starts in a couple of weeks. So we're excited to have her on board. If you guys recognize the name, Tasha Moreno is the wife of our newest officer, so it's nice to have them both on board, working for our police department. The Whitney Hall Public Safety Building projects continue to go forward, move forward well. Whitney Hall has their final inspection, in-wall inspection tomorrow morning. We'll be starting Sheetrock in the downstairs addition after that. Once that's done, which should happen pretty quickly, drywall will be completed on the town office level and the library level, so we'll be working on the upper level after that. But things are moving fast. They're starting to talk about interior paint. So once they start doing that, we're on to the finishes and those types of things. So nice to see that project moving along. They're still talking into October, November timeframe for possible move-in, turnover of the building back to the town. Some of that will hinge on the three-phase project we're doing in the elevator, but the project's continuing to move along well, so we're excited for that. Public Safety Building slowed down a little bit during the underground utilities, but we have had some rain and other weather as well that slowed that down. But they're looking at pouring the slab for the apparatus bay by the end of the month, and they're hopeful that they may get the offices poured by the end of the month as well. If not, that'll be early September. Once the slabs poured, it's panelized construction, so you guys will see the building go up fairly rapidly after that. So again, they're on track and their goal is to get the building up and winterize before winter gets here, so, or dried in. So we're excited to see that project move forward as well. Mascolma Lakeside Park, I met with our engineers Pathways out there. We walked through the entirety of the park, looking at the project. We did make a punch list and have contacted Kurtzall Excavating, and they're working with their paving contractors. The majority of the issues that we found were paving related, so they're going to be getting back out there sometime, I don't want to say in the near future, but in the future, to repair some of the paving issues out there before we call it a final project. And then I did want to remind everybody that the Mascolma Lakeside Park Committee is planning a grand opening ceremony for October 5th at 2:00 P.M. From the place?
What would you call a paving-related issue? Like, what's an example?
We had a couple of things. One, the two biggest issues, one right by the entrance in, the paving dips a little, so it catches some water, so there's a puddle there instead of it draining into the, into the catch basin like it's supposed to. And on the other side, they left the paving under the curb about a half an inch where it was an ADA accessible ramp, so it needs to be raised up a little to make that accessibility a little bit easier for people. So there was a couple of those. We've asked them to do a one-inch overlay over the entire parking lot, which will fix all of those issues, so.
That level of attention to detail is helpful.
Yeah, so it was nice having Pathways come out and walk through the plan that they engineered and just make sure everything was right. I also met with DPW out there, since they know paving a lot better than I do, as we walked through it as well, and we were able to put that punch list together.
I will note that the fellows have been fixing some of those low spots on the sidewalk that we self-performed.
Yes.
And that looks a lot better.
Yeah, along Main Street right there.
Exactly. And there were some low spots because we know it was their first attempt at doing it solo, if you will, but did a good job and then they patched it and it looks even better.
And I also want to remind everybody that that stretch by Lakeside Park along there is a temporary sidewalk prepared. We're hopeful that we can get this grant, we'll talk to you tonight, engineered and then hopefully get some money in the not-too-distant future to be able to design some parking and a better sidewalk system along there. So I did ask them to pave over that, but not to spend a lot of time and money grilling that up for something that we might tear out again.
On a side note, going back to the park for a second, responsibility for keeping the water bags filled, that's DPW?
That's been being done by volunteers.
Okay.
DPW assisted by putting in a better water system, so they have a lot more hose tickets out there.
Okay.
Then we help as needed, but so far volunteers have been able to.
Volunteers through the, through the committee?
Yeah, Patty Fried has lined up some volunteers to come in and help, so I appreciate all the work that they've put into this as well.
No, no question, no question.
And talking to the landscapers, we're continuing to fill those bags, but they fill them for over a month after the project and took care of them, and they said that the trees should have been fairly established by that time, but we're continuing to water them just to make sure that they get it out. Wanted to let you know from a planning perspective, we've had a hundred and thirteen building permits in town, as of eight twelve. To give you some perspective, that's about on par with what we did last year. So building permits continue to do well.
Are those for new buildings or is it additions and remodels?
It's additions and remodels.
Yeah, that would be anything that requires a building permit, whether it's electrical, plumbing, a lot of them this year were solar panels, we're seeing electrical permits.
We are going to work on some information. I did talk to Rob after I got this for the town report and stuff to break that out a little bit better so people can see new homes, new living units versus upgrades and repairs.
Good idea.
As you guys may have read and know, the CBA has, the CBA, Laramie Farms decision for the variance has been appealed to the Superior Court, so Rob will be working with our attorneys to work through that process and see where that appeal goes. The planning board continues to work on approximately five zoning variances that came out of the HOPE grant this year that'll go to town meeting. As kind of noted, the entire ordinance, zoning ordinance rewrite that they wanted to do is not quite done and won't be going to town report this year. They're going to continue working on some of that, and they're looking at the possibility of around two HOPE grant to help fund some of that. The septic rule that we've been talking about is still in the attorney's hands. I did have a discussion with him this week if he's going to be making some comments and possible wording changes to get back to us, but it's not ready at this time, so we'll talk about that at a future meeting. And then, as Eric noted, community development, that we're continuing to work with the brewery at the former Laundromat site. They are going to be going in front of the CBA for a couple of variances, one for signage and one for exception to a wholesaler use, so. DPW wanted to update everybody. Sorry, I got to run the computer today.
I'm running, so that maybe I can get something.
DPW staff, as we talked about, has finished sidewalk repairs and paving on Route Four with good result. Sidewalk on Shaker Hill Road will be done after the state paving is complete, so again, the amount of sidewalks that they're able to get done for the forty thousand dollars that we gave them this, tremendous this year.
So it's fair to say that we're staying on budget as far as self-performing long effort as opposed to settling it out?
We're well under budget.
Okay.
Just a second, just a second. Yeah, we're well under budget. I have them tracking not only where they come in at budget, but how much we would have paved if we subcontracted it and how much we actually got done when the project's over.
Can we, Jeremy, tell us about the project? So, I mean, you tell us a little, but it's pretty neat, like, some time, and we're doing, you know, just if we're doing something else in the event, that might be neat to, because it's a pretty big accomplishment, I think.
I will have him, I'll have him join and talk about it when they're done and we're explaining the numbers and where to go.
Because he started telling me, and it blew my mind, how, how much they've gotten done.
Yeah. No, it's, it's quite a bit more than we would have gotten done. Steve Mazinski has renewed his high backflow testing license. This will save the town a lot of money that's needed to hire a testing contractor that we've had to do in the past. When we hired him, he had a backflow license and he was able to get that renewed and updated, so he will be doing those inspections for us.
Explain backflow.
A backflow preventer is a series of check valves that doesn't let water, once it goes into a building, flow back into our system and contaminate the system if something gets into it. Those backflow prevention devices need to be inspected on a regular basis, and instead of hiring someone to come in and do that for us, we can do that ourselves now.
Thank you.
You guys have a paper on it, but we wanted to announce that the Shaker Boulevard Bridge Information Session will be scheduled for September 10th, 2024, at 6:00 P.M. at the DPW facility. You can see your flyer, and there has been notices sent to, or will be sent soon to all the residents of Shaker Boulevard. And then the Enfield DPW hosted an all-day class on variable frequency drives, remote monitoring, and SCADA systems, put on by Granite State Rural Water. So really what that is, is all the electronic monitoring and things that we have to go along with our water system. They held a class here, so it's pretty neat stuff. The system really monitors itself, and if we have a pump go down or wells get low, people get texts at home automatically. So nice system to do, and it was great to be able to host it last year. And that's my town manager.
Did other communities attend that training as well?
Yeah, we invite community from all over to attend them.
Yeah, that's really nice.
I've really pushed Jim and other department heads to host classes here as much.
Yeah, that's good.
About a couple of, since you ended on DPW, I've got a couple of quicky little DPW questions. Do we have any idea when the community building facade is going to be repaired? And I mentioned it with regard to the fact that we're inviting the entire town to vote on September 10th.
It won't be done by then, but it has been on my radar to ask them again when it's going to be done.
Perhaps we can at least set a deadline of the November vote, perhaps. Second question, the crosswalk striping at EBS, will that be done by this Thursday? That's the orientation for the lower grades.
I don't know if it'll be done by this Thursday, but it's, he's been charged to get it done before school starts.
Except the lower grades are the ones that will use that the most because they're the ones that go for a daily walk from the school.
Yeah.
And want to make it, if possible, part of their orientation, and that happens to be Thursday.
I will ask him, but he was told to have it done before school starts.
I understand. It's, it's, you know, looking at a forward date.
For those who don't know, school starts on Tuesday, next Tuesday, not this Tuesday. Watch out for those being given a bath.
Anything else, Jason?
No, that's what I had.
Other questions for him? Anything from the public? All right, we'll move along to the business of the evening, starting with the Shaker Byway Trail Project Preferred Alternatives Discussion.
Yes, I would like to introduce and invite Jeff Goodrich up. He's with Pathways Engineering, he's doing the engineering for our Byways Grant. He's going to just talk a little bit about some of the findings that he found there and some alternatives that we have on that route.
Nick Sanders is here too.
Nick Sanders from the state. He's been, Nick's been helping us a lot through this process, and then like he said, Mr. as well.
I don't know what's easiest, Ed, for this setting. Stand up and point at the map?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
And I'll try to follow you.
The owl will follow your voice.
Okay. Probably less shaky with a solid pointer, but try it with the, this one.
Yeah, it's kind of wobbly.
I'm close. It's Mike Parkinson's. The, anyway, I'm Jeff Goodrich from Pathways. I've been doing projects in this town in some capacity since high school in the seventies. Talked to you in depth about that. So the, the basic corridor we were looking at for alternatives analysis, after speaking with DOT folks as well, we're intent, what we'd like to do is present basic plan information, which is shown on these two drawings that are, that are together. Essentially, the corridor from the parking lot to the stairs to the beach, parking lot all the way down to the end where Nancy's Way is, is about five thousand feet-ish. If we extend, if we extend all the way to the pedestrian crossing to the beach, I'm going to say it's about five thousand feet on the line. So the question is, with respect to sidewalk from town to the, I think it's FD Lane, where it crosses over to the new sidewalk DPW's put in temporarily that was talked about earlier, which then routes through Lakeside Park and then along essentially the west side of Shaker Bridge, comes to a crossing in this location, and that's where the stairs are. There's a marked crossing on Route 4A at that location. So our thinking collectively is how to integrate or get folks essentially from point A of this crossing where the stairs are, all the way down to Nancy's Way. The basic three options that we looked at, we're having the path, if you will, the trail, which is going to be eight feet wide or so, adjacent to the roadway, Route Four, on both the north and the south sides. And by the way, north-south runs about like this, but I'm saying that Route 4A runs west to east, and I'm calling this north and this south, just for orientation purposes. So the immediate question we looked at was can we put in a shared-use path effectively on the north side of 4A or on the south side of 4A? The other option that we've looked at is essentially utilizing an elevated corridor along much of this lane where the silver line runs. It's, it's basically the questions that arise for us. I think we do have past experience on this site, helping the DOT do its work on Route 4A. We helped with the SWIP monitoring and so forth, so we're really familiar with this corridor. And the DOT was gracious enough to provide us with supplemental information, including topography, it's wetland information that we've integrated at the project. What this plan is intended to show, although not quite so easy to see at a distance here, is initially shoreline considerations along Mascolma Lake. And the shoreline considerations address where what Ed is showing on the screen is a fifty-foot primary buffer and a hundred and fifty-foot woodland buffer, and then all the way out to two hundred and fifty feet. So the, with lots of experience with shoreline permits, impacts of the primary buffer can be, a struggle can be difficult. So the basic premise that we have through interaction with the NHDES is avoid impacts and that primary buffer, because it's going to be tough to permit, especially if you have other alternatives. So in a basic level, as you can see, that primary buffer runs along, well into much of Route 4A. And so our presumption is sort of at, at first blush, we would expect DES to say, hey, if you can, if you can fit it on the south side, don't put it on the north side. So in terms of those two alternatives, that's our expectation, the feedback we're going to get. Additionally, looking at the potential environmental impacts along the lake, our preference would be to not locate a new shared-use path on the north side of Route 4A, just because it's going to extend more impervious area and create greater impacts on the lakeside. So I'm glad to talk about that in some depth or some detail. The other thing to contemplate as we're, as I'm migrating through my thoughts about alternatives, is somewhere in this area, because there's a sign for Shaker Village where the speed limit changes to forty miles an hour. So this corridor, I, I just want to be clear, the corridor transitions from thirty to forty along this entire length. And so in terms of safety, although a shared-use path could certainly go adjacent to a forty-mile per hour corridor, I just want to bring up the safety issues that are, that are more prevalent, would be more prevalent with a shared-use path immediately along the north side or the south side. The other thing the south side presents is, I don't know how to frame this, but as you all know, driving through there, the DOT has what I would describe as these scalloped areas with some stone fill because of the drainage coming off the hillside. And essentially, the connections between, I would say the ditches, for lack of whatever we said, along that entire corridor, or essentially called that on the DOT plans as wetlands. The other thing to contemplate is we're, as I'm migrating through my thoughts about alternatives is somewhere in this area, because there's a sign for Shaker Village where the speed limit changes to forty miles an hour. So this quarter, I just want to be clear, the quarter transitions from thirty to forty along this entire length. And so in terms of safety, although a shared use path could certainly go adjacent to a forty mile per hour quarter, I just want to bring up the safety issues that are that are more prevalent, would be more prevalent with a shared use path immediately along the north side or the south side. The other thing the south side presents is, I don't know how to frame this, but as you all know, driving through there, the D O T has what I would describe as these scalloped areas with some stone fill because of the drainage coming off the hillside. And essentially the connections between all, I would say the ditches, for lack of whatever we're saying, along that entire quarter are essentially called out on the D O T plans as wetlands. Without getting into details about what that means, they are M A features. There's, I believe, the state or the town has the ability to do maintenance or modifications, so long as intended use is not diminished. Nonetheless, there's another threshold for permitting that we've got to take a look at if we're going to put in shared use path on the south side of Route four A. But that brings us to the third option, which is essentially getting onto the the raised berm, for lack of a better way to say it, over the top of the sewer line as soon as possible. And then just following that that raised path all the way down to where the where Los Allet is, where the current town offices are. So it's going to be, if it's up there, it's flat. Having walked it, there's, there should be ample room. And it's completely isolated from the Route four A quarter. So from a from a collective standpoint, and I want to defer this discussion about getting from essentially the stairway crossing to to the parking area separately. But at a base level, these are the three options that that are before us. I might might add that like I was talking about, many work each other, but I'll leave it at that as far as public knowledge on the options.
I mean, we've been talking about this type of project for many years now. And I think what you determined as option number three, it's always been the option that people focused on, recognizing the limitations of the north side, the south side over the berm, as you say, seems to many people be the way to go and the safest.
It's the same impression I've gotten for years, and I always figured I'd have to somehow, if can't get far enough into the hillside, go just slightly around those little gullies or whatever we want to call them. I mean, the problem with projects is dig a hole and now it's a wetland, so that's a venture. So if they want to call it a wetland, that's fine. I mean, we don't have to have a straight path. It could take turn, too. I guess I'm open to it as long as we're going to make it most lean and effective. So I know it's not going to necessarily be paved, but it'd be nice if you had thicker tires, be able to walk somebody who has some mobility limitations.
Questions from the board?
I've always only considered the plateau area, frankly. Both the south side and the immediate north side, where each had each had their significant obstacles, as far as I was concerned, from the path. South side particularly would be die on impossible to do, considering the D O T, et cetera. But so the plateaued area, berm as you call it, is the only one that I've ever seriously considered. Basically, frankly.
We'll keep on the public to like to give their opinion. Go ahead, David.
As someone that occasionally fights along four A that way, it's not, it wasn't right. And I would certainly support if you're going to put a walk to them, doing what you propose. You're not going to get bikes other than perhaps not bikes or fast bikes on that trail. Unless you unless you move apart the bike around here. You don't want pedestrians right next to this.
We've got sure. Yeah, yeah, the the physical separation from the road is a positive obstacle to being.
I think just to add one other thing, too, is when you see folks down there with their dogs and small children, which don't have leashes, a big concern as a parent of the small child who's gotten better at this is they sometimes yank away from you. And so being separated from traffic with any kind of small creature, be it two legs or four legs, is ideal. The other beauty of it is if you have a distinct walking trail, I would hope that people would contain their dogs, the walking trail, and go out to the park rather than just ranging them off into the woods because you're still near traffic. You're not just going to let your crazy dog go.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on what Dave said, that the plan at this point, wherever we put the trail, is to make a hardback trail with a smoother surface like the rain trail.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a real trail.
Some of the more rugged wheelchairs could go on it potentially, especially some of the motorized ones.
Other comments?
Do you see significant issues in getting from the parking lot for Secoma Beach to the trail?
The short answer would be no, I think. I don't know how many times I've walked it, including tonight again. The the parking area is steep and the stairs obviously are steep. So I think as we've looked at this, to the extent we're looking at an option three or up on top of the berm, the sewer berm, there's room to actually install the first segment, which is about three hundred feet, it might go three hundred and fifty feet or so, adjacent to the roadway. And we're just to maintain that closer to ADA access. So in the context of proceeding with option three, pedestrian traffic would come along the west side of the bridge over to that crossing. And then we'd have something immediately adjacent, I presume, depending on how much room we have. I'm not sure we're going to have an esplanade, but at least be raised by a curb, ideally, if it's possible, to create a little space, we move it a little bit. There is a significant culvert that's at the at the driveway to the parking lot. So drainage comes to the west into that significant culvert and then drains toward toward the lake, if you will. I think there's actually plenty of room. What I've measured with a tape is like eleven feet, twelve feet, something like that to that head wall. So when I first looked at that, the panic was, golly, I don't want to have to relocate this head wall or this culvert. And so to answer your question, question more succinctly, I think that we have ample room to create a reasonable corridor to at least the the parking lot and then elevate at what I would say is a reasonable grade to to get up on top of the sewer berm. And then we're off to the races in that context.
Whose land are we on? I I know that, but.
That's an end question.
Who is in charge of such?
Fish and game. Other D O T and fish and game, which we'd be over talking with both of them.
Okay.
I'm going to say we have a tentative right of way right now. There's some there's some things that both would want us to do to be able to put this project in, but we're in that pre-engineering phase. You know, once we know that the project will move forward, I'll work with Fish and Game and the D O T hit the proper right of ways. While we're talking right of ways, now with Los Allet being sold to the Shaker Museum, once we leave the state property, we enter right into Chosen Vale property for the rest of the trail. Again, I've been in discussions with them. They're happy about the project and we would be able to obtain a right of way from that for the rest of the trip.
And then longer term, since you will be discussing with Fish and Game, the possibility of going beyond the Los Allet property?
We can talk about that. That would not.
I'm not suggesting it in this phase necessarily, but if we could establish a kind of a right of way for the future, perhaps.
Yeah, it's a possibility.
Is there any chance of law of the way that there might be an opportunity for rain gardens? So the reason I ask is conservation, we've talked quite a bit about, we've had the folks from U N H come up and look at us at the soak up their rain program. And so if there was going to be an area that's going to have some kind of catchment and then overflow, you know, I think conservation has expressed along the way, and I'm going to say this as my individual self. I have a deep concern about stuff going directly into the lake, this habit of sending water directly to the lake without having the debris fall out. And so I guess my concern is if we were to be in a position where we were collecting some kind of water, would we be trying to route it straight to those little gullies? Or would we be trying to catch it and force it down into the soil so that it gets cleaned?
So the the short answer, as one who's designed a lot of rain gardens.
I figured you had.
Over the years, is possibly, certainly, once we get beyond the scalloped areas up on the up on the berm, we just kind of wind down in this area. The topography collectively runs off the mountain toward the road. The the nice thing about the the elevated berm is it's reasonably flat. We've got to provide a two percent pitch slope in cross slope addition. I I think about this. I'm not sure which way we tip it. We tipped it. There's an opportunity to tip it backward and we could be creating another mechanism for treatment. But once we get up into this area and we're approaching Los Allet, I have to think about how to, we have to think about how to match the grades out there. And there may be opportunities for rain gardens or treatment facilities because the contours at this point start to be pushing this direction.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I worry about the the type of, you know, the dust that comes off. The rail trail has been raised as a concern over time and how does that flow into the lake? And we obviously have some serious issues and all of our water bodies here, so looking at the holistic view of how we approach, what are we putting into the lake and are we contributing? So just passing that out.
I I think it's a great idea of this way to take the outlet and looking and get to here. We're going to have to work with D O T about how to collect and manage that.
Yeah, I just, I worry, you know, it's a very nice idea. When you're a little kid making sandcastles, you make the gully, it goes right into the lake. As an adult, you realize, wait, I swim in that and I actually want to have a nicer lake than what I have before, so.
I'm sorry, in the back. And I should have said this way. Please just say your name for a minute, take a big order.
Oh, that's. Um, I, Becky Grinch. Um, I just have a question. If it's going to be near the.
It's your front.
It's going to be near where the parking lot is. Is there going to, that parking lot is full at times now. Is it going to impact that when you've been parking in that parking lot and then accessing their walking trail?
No, in that location, Becky, because I'll just say that driveway is so steep to be polite. We're going to have to put this trail, probably put an add grade. You know, you how you see ADA ramps at grade and crossings? I envision something like that in that location. It's going to have to be right next to four A in that location because it's so steep.
And the idea of the whole project is that it's not just that it starts at the beach and goes on. It's supposed to connect Main Street all the way through the Shaker Village. So there's ample parking if people choose to use it, which we know they don't always do that. But, you know, the beach parking lot is really for the beach, kind of like the boat one, which I never started.
It's supposed to do.
David?
If I'm looking at the map correctly, not only the contours, but the distances from the lake. What's the average distance from the the lakeshore for the proposed path?
Well, proposed path, they go to the tightest place, Ballpark.
It's more than the fifty because the the first red line is the fifty-foot mark, I believe. Is that correct?
It's fifty, yeah. So the a berm is going to be about a hundred feet, I think.
Yeah, that's right.
Seventy-five to a hundred.
It's better than the road.
Yeah, I think that's one big advantage of doing it up there.
Don't get salted.
True. Sharon?
Hi, Sharon. Okay, and you know, I don't think this is a problem, but I'm just thinking of somebody that sorry, Becky had mentioned, Becky had mentioned just other people using it. One of the things I'm aware of is in the summertime, how many trucks, the trailers park along the edge of that road because of trying, you know, obviously they put their boats in the lake and obviously the voting parking area is full. I don't think there'll be any sort of crossover or concern about that, but I'm just saying that's something that happens there.
May I address that? Which I think with a with a option three approach, I think we eliminate the conflicts with with that area. And I'm well familiar with what you're what you're describing. So I think if there's been somebody that's parked between the driveway to the parking area and stairs, I don't know that I've ever seen that with a boat trailer. It's always lights great on the other side. But we'd be having an elevated trail along that corridor. I suppose a larger vehicle could get its tires up over the top, but I don't envision that. I don't envision that of being a problem.
The busiest that I've observed is a half a dozen or more vehicles with boat trailers on that side of the road, parallel to what would be the new path. The nice part would be that actually, if they continue to do that and they just take a few steps up onto the berm, they then have a safe walk back to the parking lot. Right now, they're walking along four A. And that's tough. So if they hit the berm, then it's going to be nicely safe taking them back to the parking lot. And I have seen as many as eight trucks with trailers lined up there. It's very busy when the parking lot's full.
Or more when they have baskets.
When they do the tournament, it's worse. You're right.
They have an opportunity with this to make, let's make a deal with Los Allet, right? I mean, you have a tournament, you have parking, could potentially walk. There's a lot of opportunities.
I have two other issues, just to mention the project we're talking about, the Chosen Vale Nancy's Way property. So rapid repeating or the flash and even like like we're talking about at the school downtown with with the towns. And the other thing is, having worked on the Lakeside Park site, we we really haven't gotten into the planning for how we're going to do the spaces along that corridor. We acknowledge that as a part of this project. But I didn't think of another alternative. I don't know where else you're going to put parking adjacent to them. In that, that little stretch where you're going to put parking adjacent to the park and make it work.
Well, no, so whatever is general consensus for, we presented as option three, which is to continue down the path, putting the trail up on the berm. Just what, I think the commission also went through a lot of this when putting the grant together and doing discussions. Do you need anything from us this evening, other than this general consensus?
No, the, we have a, we have to do a summary with the minutes about this presentation of part of the whole L P A process with the state, so.
Yeah, no, I guess the last thing I'd say is that one of the biggest concerns for everybody, which you've acknowledged, is the safe crossing at the beach. That's going to be one of the biggest concerns for everybody is how to make that whole crossing safe.
Are we eliminating the crossing because we no longer have the crossing concern at Nancy's Way?
Well, it ain't going to happen. That that crossing remains the same as before. It will be safer. Yeah, that's what he just said. But I'm just saying that as we go forward, I think the biggest safety concern is going to be how do you cross at the beach?
I wouldn't rule out it. I'll just be there to it. That was actually part of the grant.
Yeah.
I just, I wasn't thinking about it in terms of this tonight, so.
Right.
In the grant, when we asked for it, we had the beach to have some lives there. And then, as I told you at the last meeting, the grant wrote for the R F B to be at Los Allet for the recent crossing. But now that the sale has transpired and stuff, it makes a lot more sense to cross at the Shaker.
Yeah. Are we able to move it within this part of the process or we'd have to do it?
Yeah, no, we've talked about maybe not change.
So I mean, there's a lot of really great traffic going on between the two sides of the street, man.
All right, are there any final comments or questions on this? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Okay, next up, budget discussion, saving discussion. Ed?
One minute, let me stop you. On the, on the agenda, it says budget savings discussion, but really what this discussion was for was for the first discussion, if you will, of the select board to just talk about budget priorities for this this up and coming year. We try to do that every year. I did have a discussion with Eric today. We're going to try to schedule a meeting of the Select Board Budget Committee at the second. So you will have some time to get some more, but I wanted to just have an initial discussion about, you know, are there things you've been thinking about? What would you like to see prioritized over the next year? You know, we've had this discussion last year and I hope to just continue having one every year just to just to kind of set those priorities and what you guys would like to see.
Well, there. I just pull the board.
I I think my top priority based on some challenges we had last year is accuracy. And just, I know that there are things, accuracy. And I know that things change and that we learn during the budget process, but. but really making sure that we're checking the spreadsheet. And if we have to do manual entries, that they're getting two sets of eyes. Because it's a, I, I think we're a very honest group. Um, and when we don't transfer something, we, we admit to it. But it's really hard for the public to understand why that happens. I acknowledge, you know, we all have our moment. But whatever we can do between software and magic spreadsheet to not have some of those issues, I think for me is the top priority, because that makes it more believable and more transparent. I'm not saying anyone did anything on purpose, but that would go along with, um, in terms of trust.
We have put some, we have put some things in place to make sure that at least last year's issue doesn't happen again. And then we've, we will be talking about this with the budget committee, but we've researched some budget, new budget and finance software. As you guys may imagine, it's not cheap. So I think it'll be a discussion we have at the budget committee level to see if it's something we wanna, wanna look at.
I think that a budget priority for us this year should be, I'm not gonna say create a lean budget, but to be a very, a very careful budget. Because I think that the citizens are beginning to worry that we've got a little carried away with expenditures.
No.
I, I won't be as conservative as John, and I will suggest the word lean. I, I think it is important that we look very carefully. I know C I P has got an extensive list. Um, I think we need to look very, very carefully at, uh, all the expenditures this coming year and establish proper priorities so that we're being very careful and cautious about establishing this next year's budget as we fully incorporate the new buildings and costs of the new buildings. Uh, because we're gonna run into, of course, not only bringing on the, uh, cost of the construction, but we'll also be bringing on the, um, fulfilling costs to actually run those buildings, uh, as well as maintain spaces that we had, such as the old police building. So I think it's very, it's a good year to be very cautious, careful, and, and I would dare say lean towards, uh, the budget this year.
No.
Um, I agree with what John and Tracy have said. I would just, um, also encourage department heads to be thoughtful about what they actually do need, not to feel, you know, totally constrained, but understand that we do have to improve leanness.
We're running really lean this year. I mean, that's the thing is, I, I, we get your memos, and we are running very lean portrait reason. But I worry that in the long run, if we don't invest in some of the training so that, you know, it improves, you know, people, our, our value add comes from our people and our brains. So not teaching them modern technology and new things can hurt us in the long run. So like lean but smart, not, not cut off our nose to spite our food.
Well, that's a good point.
Oh, no question.
Right, yeah, I think we're very careful, and I really wanna acknowledge how, because you guys are being really careful this year. We are, I, I'm nervous that we're dangerously close to the line of being careful. And I just wanna say, I, I don't wanna see us plan to take anything from undesigned native. That, that was the last time last year until we're back up in the range.
Well, one of the comfort levels that I see is that we're not ignoring deferred maintenance. We're bringing new buildings online, we're paying attention to what we have. Uh, the performance that I've observed with regard to our self-performance on the sidewalks, I think is quite good. We moved away from deferred maintenance, as quite frankly, this town has had a history of in the past.
Yeah, I think I would, would echo what people have said. We're sort of entering a new steady state as we bring new buildings on, as we complete very significant projects. And we need to focus on completing those projects in, 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 in a manner consistent with what we've done. It's been really good. And then, and just sort of learn, learn where we are with all of those. And I would, I would act okay. One of the things I did not care for last year was the use of undesigned funds to buy down the tax rate. I'd like to see us avoid that this year. As we saw, you know, unexpected expenses do come up, uh, which we'll talk about the next item. And we need to be prepared for those. And the designated fund is how we do that. Any comments?
I will let you guys know. This is right on par with what I've told the department heads. So, um, I did tell them, you know, present a budget to me that pretty much keeps things status quo and is low as you need to keep things status quo. So we're not, not trying to add anything, we're not trying to detract anything from what we're doing. But, you know, let's, let's keep the service levels at what we have planned. But, you know, let's not add extra projects and things that we don't need to be doing at this time.
I think you're right, we need to maintain what we have. And that includes the people who work for us. And I, I like what you say about education and training.
Yeah, well, I think we're seeing the value of that this year where D P W is self-performing projects that in the past we would not have been able to do both. And they're presenting the option of self-performing, whether it's the sidewalks or, um, the Whitney Hall exterior. And I really like that where they're, they're taking responsibility and taking ownership of the facilities in a way that really wasn't happening, I don't think, ten years ago. Um, that's a really big positive.
I, I think the COVID work that they've done has been very good. It's a typical example of, uh, not staying on that path of deferred maintenance. Hit the culverts, clean them up, make sure they're ready for the next season. And they've done a good job of that.
Well, and I think we've seen that. I wanna add to that, that, you know, I've, twice I've been out of town and I've called home going, hey, there's big storms, what's going on, what are our roads looking like? And they said, there's no problem.
Sorry, yeah, we have seen the proof.
We've been lucky.
That they're successful.
Been on by some of those storms, but we have had some big storms in the, the stormwater.
We got three inches and twenty four hours in one of them, that's substantial. Yeah, it's enough that in the past, without the maintenance, it would have hurt us substantially. I, I think also we, uh, you know, we've, we've looked at our strategy, we've looked at our goals. And so asking ourselves how the budgetary requests are aligning with those goals. So, um, within it, a lot of our goals had to do with maintaining what we feel represents end field. And so things like making sure we don't have deferred maintenance filing out the bound. And there were some more advanced lofty goals, and maybe we can't go there right now. I'm saying not never, but set them aside as can we fit this in? But really making sure we're aligning with what we agreed on as a team of five.
Yeah, we did look, and we will continue looking at the strategic plan closely. But as you guys know, when we wrote that, we purposely wrote the next couple of years to be a lot of planning and compromise.
That's right.
Anything else you want to add? Any comments from the public?
Several of us from the budget committee are here. And I mean, certainly as one of them, will be bringing that message of a leaning budget goal. Because I think that's clearly what, um, many citizens in the community want.
Yep, and I'll just reiterate, so I asked that to schedule a joint meeting. We did it last year, I think it works really well. Not next week, because the budget committee has sort of organizational and initial stuff to do. Uh, but presumably one of the September meetings, just to have a general discussion between the two groups.
Yeah, but I think it's important that message comes from us as.
Yeah, that's part of why I asked that to schedule a meeting.
I, I love it.
We could be there and say.
I love it.
Yep. All right, um, if there's nothing else on that, uh, we will go with the ARPA lost revenue funding discussion.
So this is the memo that I wrote that did not make it in your package. But really wanted to go through that. Let me pull my copy out so I don't miss anything. And here, so I did come to you guys on July first, and we had this introductory discussion about the, the leftover ARPA funds that have, wanna, wanna obligate that. At this time, we estimate, and we're fairly compliment, confident on this estimation, that we'll have approximately a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-one cents left in our ARPA account. This extra money is a hundred percent contributed to the P W fund grant that D P W has received. You guys remembered about a year and a half ago, we obligated our funds for a police cruiser, an ambulance, and a D P W truck. With that grant fund coming in, um, we were able to spend a lot less money than we anticipated through our ARPA. We also didn't have the full money from our C I P funds, which was great. But it does, it did leave us with a, with a surplus in our ARPA funds, if you will. Those ARPA funds do need to be obligated by December of this year, or we lose them. So I, it's something that we wanna do, so for multiple reasons. I'm coming to the board asking that we obligate those ARPA funds to cover police salaries in the twenty twenty-four budget. I discussed with you in July that there's a, there's a few places that that money, that the town could use that money, depending on what happened. As you guys know, we authorized with the Whitney Hall project and then authorized upgrading the elevator, which was outside of the contract. I'm still hopeful that we're gonna be able to manage that out of the Whitney Hall project, but it's there. I also talked to you in Ju- July about the extra public safety payment that was unbudgeted that we had to make this year because we should make one last year. If you guys wanna go into more depth on that, I could explain that again. Really came down to the, the bank saying we didn't need to pay one, and that the attorney getting involved this year and saying, yes, you needed to. So again, I'm, I'm really confident now. I wanna double check some numbers before I bring numbers to you, but I'm confident that, that we're gonna pretty much manage that out of this year's budget. It's been a tough go, you will see. I know you guys just commented on how great it is, but, um, we did stop, um, a lot of travel, training expenditures, those types of things for this year to, to catch that up. Delay, bringing a groundskeeper, some of those things, just to, to glean some extra money out of the budget. So I've been working with my department heads to do that, and I think we are going to make it. But we'll, we'll continue watching that. But overall, in the complex realm of ARPA funds, covering, covering government expenditures is approved. Governing public safety expenditures is really almost asked for by the treasury, that a lot of the COVID response came from the public safety. So public safety salaries, those kind of things have been brought up in a lot of the, the talks on what we could use ARPA funds for. The other thing that it does do is it just gives that, that flexibility. If we manage out the double payment situation and we're able to keep the elevator in the Whitney Hall fund, then this money would go for public safety, which would leave us with some extra money that would go into fund balance that the budget committee and select board can decide what they wanna do. Leave it in fund balance, move it to C I P, where we were looking at spending ARPA funds or many other ways. So I think this is the best way for the town to be able to obligate those funds pretty much down to the penny and not lose money back to the federal government and make use of the, the money in the most flexible way to help the town a bit too.
And just a quick reminder, what's the, um, process and date that we have to obligate by?
Well, we'd have to talk about it here. We do have to have at least one public hearing. I wanna double check the process. We might have to have two public hearings, but we will have one public hearing once we know what direction we're going. And then the funds need to be obligated by December, by the end of December. And then they have to be spent by December twenty twenty-six. But if we obligate them for this year's budget, they're obligated and spent.
Now, when you say obligate to police salaries, what, what is that process? What does that mean exactly?
We have a public hearing, we discuss it with the public, we discuss it with the select board and make a determination that we're gonna use our ARPA funds to offset the cost of police salaries.
In lieu of other funds that we would use from the town for the police salaries?
And I do have a question in to make sure that what we're asking to do.
Right, right.
But they, they told us to do that before, and I just wanna make sure that it's still the way. When we did the public safety building thing, they said to use, they said use ARPA funds for police and fire salaries, use the money out of the budget to purchase.
All right.
Yeah, always talk.
That answered my question, thank you.
So, but I do have a question in the N H M A, they have an ARPA specialist there to just double, triple check things.
So if we have to have two public hearings and a decision by this group, that'll push us on a little further into the year. Are you all right in cash flow in terms of, uh, the police salaries in that case?
This has nothing to do with cash flow.
So the money that you'll use for, uh, covering the police salaries, for example, which will come out of this same budget, uh, you're fine if it comes on a little bit later in the year, October, for example.
Yeah. Like I said, we don't need this at all. I'm trying to look at a way to.
It's an accounting function.
Make sure that we capture the funds that the federal government gave us and use them in the best way for the town a bit.
Yes, I think, I think what I'd say is the budget would not change. We would be using ARPA funds to pay some of the salaries this year, uh, which would allow us to obligate to the penny, so we would not lose any funds at all. For example, if we obligated for the elevator, and then it came in under budget, we would lose the difference in the money. This way we would not lose anything. And then we could use that difference in the budget to cover some of these unexpected expenses if we need to, such as the, uh, my budgeted public safety payment, if we had to, if we can't manage it out of the budget. And then if we don't, it would go into the undesigned fund at the end of the year. Like if we don't need that money, if we hit the budget with the unexpected funds, unexpected expenditures, it would go into our undesigned fund at the end of the year. And we would not lose anything because it would be budgeted to the penny.
This is a good problem to have, this is all because we got a grant.
Yeah, no, this is, this is.
Really a good problem.
A huge win by D P W for getting a grant for that, that drop down.
Do you need a motion from us tonight?
When do you want?
Like I said, I need a motion or consensus that this is the direction we would like to go. And then we can schedule a public hearing and I'll verify.
Now they've explained, it makes perfect sense, and I think that's the direction we should go.
Giving money back to the federal government is always that idea.
Anything else from the board on that discussion?
Go ahead, Dan.
I'm just not a great believer in accusing one time money for operating expenses.
What would you suggest we use it for?
Well, we got a tanker that was never in the budget. Same.
And you, are you allowed to reallocate to not get? In a rears, I don't know.
I mean, that hundred thousand dollars probably is part of next year's budget. It's gonna be operating expenses, which means you're gonna have to have a hundred thousand more in the budget to cover for next year.
So next year, we're purchasing a tanker through C I P presumably?
Yeah, but it was, what I'm saying is, it was obligated this year. It's ever budgeted by, by C I P.
When do we get the bill for the tanker?
It'll be in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Uh, no, so I asked when we would get the bill for that, I didn't hear the answer.
Twenty twenty-five.
Could we somehow earmark this money for that, so I don't think it's spent for that?
We could, we can obligate it for that.
Is the federal government gonna let us drag it out into twenty twenty-five?
If we obligate it by twenty twenty-four, it has to be paid by twenty twenty-six.
And if we get a grant, we're screwed.
Yeah, we won.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, like, because we weren't necessarily anticipating getting this grant. So this is a sure thing versus.
I mean, another, another, another accounting path would be to go down police salaries and then move the hundred K into C I P.
The elevator is a fixed cost because it's a bid price. What's the disadvantage to allocating this money now for that?
Because you may be able to manage it in.
If I manage it out of the Whitney Hall, it goes away.
Well, if you manage it, it doesn't go away, it becomes part of that lean, that mortgage, if you will.
Yeah, it writes that down.
Yes. So if we did that, then it lessens that obligation in the long run anyway.
And then we still have, what, twenty thousand dollars we have to allocate? What are we looking to do?
Oh, the elevator's more than that.
No, an elevator would be about thirty thousand more than what we're anticipating to happen, so.
I thought we were trying to make up an eight thousand.
I think that should be considered for the public hearing as a viable alternative.
I want to do whatever guarantees that doesn't go back to the federal government.
Yeah, I mean
Well, that's the advantage of the elevator. It has to be obligated this year because it's part of the contract. And we already know exactly the dollar amount because it's a bid price.
I don't, and I don't honestly, the federal government is pretty loosey goosey. Um, they gave you categories for ARPA, but most places spent it on day to day. Open to the period.
Like I said, that's what they highly recommended.
So why can't you just take the, I mean, there could be rules that you can't do this. But why can't you just take the ARPA money, put it in the police salaries, take the leftover police salaries, put it in the undesigned fund, but kind of bookmark it for this SMA expense.
That's what moving into CIP would do that. But I think any transfers in the CIP, we can't transfer money into CIP without town meeting, correct?
Yeah, it would have to go.
Correct. So it would be a town meeting article to transfer that money, which we could certainly commit ourselves to doing.
Seems to me that we were making this further complicated, and I would prefer to keep it simple. And, and I think Ed's plan is, is simple and direct and I'm in favor of going with that. In fact, I will make a motion that we do that.
On public hearing on the subject?
Hmm, I'll second that motion.
You don't know whether you need one or two, is that right?
I don't know, but we should schedule one and we'll know by then.
I agree.
Yeah. So let's schedule one for
October.
Well.
September.
Next meeting.
Next, yeah, next BOS meeting.
Your first BOS meeting is September third, Tuesday.
September third.
Just a Tuesday. I'm looking at your calendar.
There you are.
But we do have a motion on the table for, to bring the plan that uh, Ed has put forth.
Well, actually, the motion is simply to schedule a public hearing according to note.
No, that's the motion that's written there. The motion I just made is
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Was to, was to have
Going my own blundering way.
To bring this plan forward for that public hearing.
Yes.
Right.
Which, there you go.
Yeah. And, and which of course is for clarity, everybody does not obligate any decision making after that public hearing. Just that would be presented at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Um, oh, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, passes four to one. So we'll have that plan brought forth.
I simply prefer a public discussion ahead of the vote.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that plan is available, we haven't thought through to its entirety. Um, I will encourage alternatives to be brought forth as well. Yes, question?
Okay, can I ask a really stupid question?
You can ask.
Why is there a surplus of a hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, because, oh, that, so DPW did an excellent job. So we obligated the funds to purchase vehicles, and they wrote a grant which got a hundred thousand dollars from another source. So now, the original four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we only had to spend three hundred and something thousand of it. And we have a hundred thousand dollars left because we got another hundred thousand from this other grant. Right, so we had, they wrote a grant that got extra money, and so we didn't have to spend this money.
So you don't have to spend it on what you originally wrote the grant for?
We didn't write the grant. This was the ARPA funds, and the federal government just said, we're going to give you this much money, but here's some areas you can spend this.
So, so this, this, these ARPA funds specifically, we received a certain amount of money and a wide variety of ways that we're allowed to spend it.
Yeah, I got that.
And we, we chose to buy vehicles. And then we didn't have to buy vehicles with all of the money. And so now we have a hundred thousand dollars that we thought we were going to buy vehicles with, but we don't have to. So we can spend it on another, another category within the allowable categories.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
This is, remember during COVID, they gave out
It does, to a certain extent, that why is the government saying, here, take money?
During COVID, there were big chunks of money given to every ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so and then it kind of gives a flashback to early COVID. Yeah.
Get all my questions.
We're still, no, no, we're still spending that money. We're
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We didn't go Wild and buy the farm. Not yet.
Go ahead, Shirley.
I was, I was just wondering, why do you think it's not a good idea to use it with the elevator?
I didn't say it wasn't a good idea. I'm saying this, this would give us flexibility to be able to spend it in different ways. Like I said, my plan is still to manage the elevator out of the Whitney Hall contract and be able to come in enough to be able to fit that into the contract we already have with Red Look.
Yeah. And like my personal big concern is the, the public safety payment where the bank told us we didn't have to make it. And then the bond agent said we did, so we made a payment that was unbudgeted as a one-time unexpected expense.
And a little bit of this in January, the thought process came about with that going. We have a really tight budget and a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar payment. I didn't want to go over budget two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So it gives us some flexibility there, but we could still pay for the elevator. We can still pay for the fire truck. It just depends on how, how the finances shake out.
Does that, this just go a year or next?
Which one?
It would be for the twenty twenty four, the budget that we're working in now.
Yeah.
I am not a budget person. I understand there's lots of considerations. I get it, Kate, that definitely um, wanting to spend this money and not, you know, lose it is a number one priority. Um, and I get having flexibility is a number two priority. But as, as a John, as a Sharon, both a taxpayer, I was going to say John Hughes, but I was supposed to say Sharon Botha taxpayer. I think from the taxpaying public, if they, to me, when I see money getting moved around, it's a shell game. And I get suspicious as to why did you ask for this? And now you're doing this, and now you're doing that. And what I could say in my, my most outlandish, serious way is you have money to pay the police, pay the police. You have unencumbered things, the elevator and then something else was mentioned. I'm not sure what it was. A tanker. You have, those things have to be paid for, pay them. Don't be like, well, we're going to do this to move this, to move this. It's, I think from a taxpayer point of view, it just gets very confusing and it just seems suspicious. So just be, be straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Um, for the dates of that public hearing, do you want to do it in our first meeting, which is the day after Labor Day or the second?
Tuesday?
Yeah, so our, our meeting is scheduled for the Tuesday after Labor Day. And then the, the third Monday, which would be our normal day.
The third Monday is the sixteenth.
Okay.
Yeah. We should do that.
Which one would we like to have the first hearing? Do you want to do it right away?
Right away.
Are you able to be prepared for that one? Nobody's on vacation, I don't think. Okay. Okay, so in two weeks, we'll have the first public hearing. Alright. Then uh, setting a public hearing date for the acceptance of donations in excess of ten thousand dollars to the community nursing program. Assuming September third is fine for that as well?
Yep, that would be fine.
Is it an injunctions to September third for, no, continued community generosity? Alright, um, that concludes the business for the evening. There are no administrative items this evening. Do other business become before the board, uh, starting with public comments? Any comments from the board?
I have a question. Can I interrupt?
Certainly, yeah.
We have a calendar cost review sheet here.
Oh, yeah.
As, as a calendar dear to my heart.
Okay. Well, well, I might pull back. True this, yeah, I think this was an Elise item, and then, and she wasn't able to attend this evening. Ah, so we will back up and do that. Uh, Ed, do you have any comments on this?
That might have been her budget savings discussion.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't my budget discussion that I wanted on.
Are we still online to discuss this?
We can.
Calendar? No, I mean, can we defer it until the September meeting or do you want to discuss that tonight?
I, I'm fine with doing it in the next
Unless there's a time pressure, I'd, I'd like to have Elise here, because I know this is
It would be, I would, I would too. I just don't want to crunch ourselves so badly that
We're getting to the point where if we're going to start it, she needs to start it because it takes her a ton of time to do it.
So two weeks from tonight would be okay to discuss this item?
I would recommend she be here. She's
I'd rather she be here.
Passionate, but I would let you guys know that we're going to make a plea again not to do it. I think it's a waste of time.
I'm going to throw in an aside to that discussion, however, perhaps a potential alternative. And that is, uh, with regard to the town website. I'd like to see the calendar on the town website run out a year. Right now, it's only the current month we're in, for example, and I'd like to be able to have it printed. Not by us, but by individuals.
You can see, I just went into September.
Then it just posted in the last day, which came back.
No, I would even download stuff forever. You just have to hit all, do full calendar.
Exactly.
And then, well, so it's normal on electronic calendars then to get August, and then you hit the button and it goes to September arrow. I don't print things.
It will print.
Oh, calendar accepted.
It will not, it will not print. I, I've done it in Mac and I've done it on a PC.
I got it right here. Look at this, a W P D F. Oh, no.
Look at that, because there is a print button and a print button.
In two weeks, Kate will bring printed copies.
So anyway, I'm, I'm just suggesting, I don't know I, which way I, 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 I am on the calendar, the printed townwide calendar yet. That's just a little thing. I'd like to make sure it's up to speed.
We can look into that, and I was going to show you through that. I did have her go in and put all the trash weeks on the online calendar. All the meetings obviously are on the online calendar. Then
You can't download them as a batch. That's what's ugly.
And then we're going to post, we're also going to post the PDF of the
If you can't batch download, I'm not interested.
So yeah, I could print that and you, we get the magnet out. But anyway, we're looking at ways to save money. You guys have a budget spreadsheet in here that shows you how much it costs the town to print that calendar.
Um, maybe you bring us an alternative magnet that has like, I don't know, dog licensing since that's been a hot topic. Um, and some key dates, like really important dates, like town meeting and stuff that you would have on the calendar that you would look for so that they are are printed, uh, you know. It's definitely a big challenge, I think, for people who love the calendar. Like, so I hate almost everything printed. And I love that kind of calendar, so I'm a downer, hell of a job.
There you go.
We'll look at it, but we will continue to remind you.
But if it comes down to like magnet or a calendar, I need the magnet or I'll, I'll be leading the riot. My house will fill with garbage.
Magneto versus
See, I don't want to take her thunder, but she's going to talk about how the solid waste in the calendar is wrong because of one little mistake. And most meetings, or not most, a lot of meetings are wrong people has ever published. And she thinks it's a waste of town staff.
I can see the handwriting on the wall here.
Just a question on your business, the last business item was setting a hearing date for the acceptance of a donation for the community nursing program.
We'll, we'll do it at the next, our next meeting. So we'll do it in two weeks.
I thought that was the
Did they do both?
We're going to do both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there'll be two people.
Multitasking.
Well, well, so now, now we will go into public comments. I know I saw a hand go up in the
Hi, Betty. Like I live on Crystal Lake Road. And I just wanted to know, there are two cones by where there's like this little swamp area that kind of extends. And it's very dangerous and it's, the pool is growing. Does anybody know if somebody's fixing it?
I can talk to DPW. I did see those cones myself, so I can see what they're doing. I'm sure they're
If the cones belong to them.
No, it is. Yeah, I know it.
Okay, sometimes the cones on Crystal Lake Road do not belong to the town.
Yeah, those do. We have another comment, Paul. Sure, John Essler here tonight to ask the town board to take a deep breath and back off on, I consider the overly zealous reaction to a one-time cyanobact of whom called the septic rule. Uh, it's caused a tremendous amount of anxiety along the lake. It's going to cause a lot more, if therefore will, then you'll venture. And I'd like your folks to consider instead adopting a much more amiable rule, like to place on the ass. Except.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's a comment on. Don't see any hands up online. Any other business to come before the board this evening?
I think an other business item that could go forward to another time. I've gotten a lot of feedback. Um, and I think it's been exacerbated by the projects downtown, but about, we talk about parking a lot. One of our favorite topics, right? Eva talks about parking, but in particular about um, what appropriate parking is, like can you park on town property overnight? Can you park for an extended area of time? Can you be out over the white line for a month at a time? Can you leave, there's the, next to the Lutheran Hertz parking lot, there's some town parking. Can you park your camper there? Can you park your car there and leave it? So um, as we're looking at having a brewery and hopefully businesses starting us downtown, and there's some questions about where people who go to fifty-six main going to park. I think we need to think about like, how long can someone park? You know, other towns, I don't want to be hand over with Parking Meter. But I also want to talk about like, is it a two hour limit? Like, can you go to Lakeside Park and park your camper next to the road and leave it there for a month? Because right now, that's basically how Main Street is set up. We've had a school bus where ostensibly a company who owns their parking lot. In the parking lot, we have an El Camino that's been hanging out and there was a, might be the camper from Main Street down, had hopped down the road.
And I think I checked it, and it was exactly the same one.
So I think
I didn't know how, how they get permission to park on a town lot.
Aren't they going to be paving?
The one that came from Main Street was moved for s- ten days to the town parking lot, which is across the street from Lutheran Parking.
It's, well, it's not across the street.
It's, it's next door.
Yeah, it was moved down there while they were milling. And then I gave them permission to put it on the community center parking lot over the weekend when they were supposed to pave Main Street.
Yeah.
Well, they put it in the town lot on Main Street, which is next to the Lutheran parking lot. Uh, and then they moved it back. But my question also becomes quite frankly, as far as the milling is concerned on that road, if that's private property, why are we paving their front yard?
Or not?
They're parked in the state right away.
If they're, if they're parked in property that, and I've heard from the police chief, that he can't ask them to move because they're on their own land.
No, they've been working with them. That, I can talk to you about that in, in a non-public if you want, but there's a, there's a lot of issues there.
But I think there's bigger issues about parking that I'd like to address, like how, you know, is, is something two hour parking versus, you know, because that, maybe that's the first step is to make things two hour, four hour, whatever parking. But I think this whole idea that as, you know, say you get a tenant and they're great and they have three cars, can they permanently leave their car on Main Street? Right now, I think the answer is unfortunately, yes. It, I mean, well, no, we're not doing anything. We're leaving them. We are leaving a bus and whoever wants to stay overnight. I mean, we're pretty much the Walmart parking lot at this point.
Well, we can do that. Would you guys be open to us working on that, bringing back a proposal on?
I think that would be
That's going to be good.
Like I said, I don't want to be hand over a Lebanon, but I do think we need something a little more
I'm not sure it's
But we can't
Town hosts the bus.
We can't attract business to Main Street if there's no place for people to park.
Well, and how do we prefer, what is it, whoever, whichever landlord gets their tenant into the spot to leave their car permanently first?
I had a question the other day. I noticed that the uh, Hughes parking lot, which I always assumed was a public parking lot, had a sign that said parking lot closed for private, public, uh, private events.
There was supposed to be a wedding.
Well, this is two days before the wedding occurred. This is Wednesday.
Yeah.
And on Wednesday, they had a sign which said, public parking lot closed for a private event. The sign stayed that way, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and to my knowledge, it was still that way yesterday, today, tomorrow, and the next day.
Don't worry.
But anyway, I knew it was for a wedding coming up, but that wedding was later on the weekend, but that sign was down in the middle of last week. So my question is, are we closing a public parking lot when we rent out the community center?
We've always had that
At times we have.
Yeah. But it doesn't get always used. The wedding didn't happen because the floors didn't dry.
So going forward, it sounds like maybe we need a review of our current policies and regulations. I know we do, we also, like parking in general also extends to how long someone can park their RV in front of their house in general.
Coming down to Whitney Hall, I was going to do Yeah. Kind of a revitalization of public parking and where it was and stuff. Anyway, so I will start working with the executive team and we'll bring back recommendations all up and down Main Street of
Yeah.
Oh, all public parking and up and down Main Street.
Okay.
A, a lot of wedding parties will provide a bus service to, if there isn't a lot of parking to take people to the wedding. That's something that might, when they rent a place, might be an suggestion.
Yeah.
As a member of the um, Massona Lakeside Park uh, committee with the decrease of the parking, I don't know, um, there, there's been the, the rule for quite a long time that there not be overnight parking there, uh, which is occasionally not observed. Um, and Um, and but, um, with the more limited parking, um, it's getting, getting more crowded even um, at whatever lower volume times compared to, uh, to previous years.
Okay. Sure.
I'm sorry, yeah, actually, so that I can say about the overnight parking. It's, it's quiet at Mask on the Lakeside Park, but I I notice vehicles, camper vehicles there and think about, hmm, getting kind of late.
I learned a very, um, interesting fact when, uh, just from fishing game on the random, which is that it's not legal to, um, sleep out overnight on the ice because there were folks headed into overnight and they were on the ice. And I was like, I didn't know that was not legal in New Hampshire because in some states, that's pretty normal. But yeah, I think not everybody knows that it's not obvious, so maybe if we kind of get some things documented, it will be helpful to communicate.
Well, that's state property.
No, I'm saying in general, though, like the idea that the park is closed, there are expectations. If we communicate them
Well, I thought you meant sleeping on the ice.
Oh, no, they couldn't, the state, that's on them. Man, I'm not in touch with them. I just, the fishing game happened to say that to me and I was like, oh, okay. I'll never catch you doing that.
Yeah. Any other business this evening?
How about a motion to adjourn?
Be second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for bringing up that question. I think it's a very valid
I just been trying to think of a way to do it that's fair. I don't want to pick
It'll, it'll help me, first of all, it allowed me to bring in